So now we have the opponents and their 15 minutes.
Thank you Mayor, City Council, and thank you city staff. My name's Don Wilson, I'm Vice President and General Manager of Valero Refinery. I'd like to also talk about the City Council meeting June 19th. Valero heard very clearly the City Council's expectation from that meeting. There's a need for information related to the May 5th, 2017 PG&E power outage. We're here to provide more information to you tonight. There's a need to establish clear and consistent lines of communication and renew an emphasis on our common goals with city staff. We're going to demonstrate that tonight. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District fence line monitoring project, you told us to have it installed in six months, we're going to tell you that we're going to achieve that. We have a 15-minute presentation full of information. I'd like to introduce Rich Walsh from our corporate offices.
Council members, Mayor, and citizens of Benicia. I'm Rich Walsh, I am from the corporate office. I'm Vice President of our regulatory and environmental law programs from Corp. And we came in, we have a PowerPoint presentation we sent over to you, but as we prepared for this, and we listened back through all the discussions from the last council meeting, we realized we've got to do a better job of communicating because there's clearly not a concrete understanding of what we have out there in terms of monitoring and what it's capable of. And so what we did, we took actually a picture off the wall of one of the offices there and we marked it up. And I want to kind of start off with a baseline to make sure we're clear about what's out there already. The blue hashes that you see in the center there, that represents the main refinery processing block. There are over 100 monitors on every major stack in that processing block. So every major emission source in the refinery has got a monitor on it that's an operating unit source. So in terms of continuous operation and normal refinery operations, we have actually the best data in terms of where that goes. And that data is given to the outcomes or the results of that is passed along to the district and the district information is available to the public. The next group of dots that you see around there are the yellow dots. Those are BTEC's passive monitors. These are brand-new monitors that have just gone on to the refinery. These are required by US EPA under the new laws. And those are recording the benzene and BTEC's unit toxics that would be around the perimeter of the refinery and each of the operators. And those designation points are made by the federal government and that data goes into an EPA database and it is going to be available in real-time by the EPA. And so they are going to have that data put out each time we turn in the report, that data will be uploaded into an EPA system. There are also the array documents, and if you look at the pink dots, these are the new district-required open path monitors. These are the most sophisticated and complex monitors out there. The state went through an extensive effort at looking at what is the latest and best technology. And the pink lines are to show you that these arrays are reflecting across those areas. So that's a solid point of monitoring across these things. And if you look at the substantial green belt that's around the refinery, these monitors are much closer to the community and actually, you know, protecting the perimeter of the community, detecting anything that would come through from the refinery. And in terms of the placement on this, the district made up rules about where they would be placed. And if you look at the first, the primary place that the wind blows, the overwhelming time, it's blowing back towards the industrial district, back towards that band of array monitors that are on the far side of the refinery over there. That's the overwhelming time of the year. The other time that you have air, sometimes during the winter, it blows back towards the band of monitors that stretch all across the fence line there towards the community. There's also some periods during storms when it blows south, and that's also picked up by the bottom two array parameters that are right along the edge near the, what you can see is the stormwater surge pond area. And then, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the 7 percent, the district cuts off 7 percent. If the air goes there less than 7 percent, the district doesn't require it. But actually, in Benicia, in our meteorological, it was about 1 to 2 percent of the time that it blows to the north up there. The other thing that I would point out is we do have community monitors in Benicia. Valero maintains three outside-the-refinery parameter monitors. Those are the orange dots that you see, two on the prevailing wind side of the refinery over there along the industrial corridor, and one out in the center of the community. And those are the ground-level monitors that are maintained by us. And we're here today to tell you that we've committed to and are working on now putting in telemetry systems on those monitors, and they will upload to a publicly-available website in real-time. So we will have that available. The other two dots that are up there, one's green all the way up in the north, that's where we're in the process of examining whether we can add another monitor up there. There's no utilities up there, and, you know, we've got to look at the terrain, so we haven't done all the studying for the array monitors, but we'll be looking at whether we can put an open path monitor along that line there. The black dot there is the monitor that we worked on with the Good Neighbor Community Agreement. And that was a monitor that we were building, and we bought and built according to the specifications of the Good Neighbor Agreement and the city on what they wanted. And we operated that monitor up there for two years while we waited for the city to figure out where they wanted to put the monitor. And then ultimately, the city indicated that they didn't want the monitor anymore because they knew all these new array of monitors were coming in. So we still have that monitor, but it's obsolete compared to the other monitors there. It's interesting that that's where the Good Neighbor Committee selected for a community monitor, at least while it was on our property, which kind of shows you that that big green belt up there is helping to indicate what's heading into the community. The other point that I wanted to make is there's been this kind of narrative that during a big flaring event, or like we had on May 5th, that the community is blind, or that there's nobody out there, and there's no monitor, there's no network to figure out what's happening in the community. But whenever we have an event like we did in May 5th, and in fact, on May 5th, we deploy mobile monitors all through the community, we did then. And not just Valero. The district deployed them, EPA deployed them, and the county deployed them. That's how we knew what was going on, how we knew we didn't need shelter in place and everything like that. Now, clearly, all that information fed into our unified command in real-time, and so we realize that we, if the city wants to maintain a separate command, that's fine. We'll get a liaison into that command, and we recognize that we'll need to do that. And we're willing to do that, and we're committing to do it now. And we'll feed that real-time data that's coming in, the benefit from all of the different agencies will be able to pass that along. Sorry, I'm getting off the presentation, but I just kind of want to share all this because we feel like you won't know which way the wind's blowing when you have the big flaring event. The mobile monitors really get us out and into the community and allow us to make sure that we have adequate understanding of what's going on. One of the other things I would mention too is, in 2007, the district did an extensive mobile monitoring study of Benicia. And the district did that as part of their evaluation of where they were going to be putting community monitors. And the district concluded, after studying SOX, H2S, all the criteria pollutants, the toxics, and even metals, that Benicia had the cleanest air in the Bay Area. Of all the places they studied, you guys were the cleanest. And that's with the refinery being present. And that's before we did some of our biggest emission reduction projects. We've lowered the emissions since the time we bought this refinery to today by 94 percent. And we think that that's a tremendous reason why, you know, the air quality in Benicia is so good, because Valero is a very good operator. Now, we recognize, we had the May 5th event, and that's unacceptable, and it's unacceptable to us as a reliable operator. And so, you know, we don't want that to happen again. So let me turn now away from monitors and turn to the event. In the last staff meeting, you know, we didn't share a lot about what had happened in the event, and we didn't do a good job of explaining what we've done to mitigate it. And part of that was this statement you heard about, "We're in litigation." Just to be clear, it wasn't that we wanted to not share anything because we wanted to hang on to our litigation strategy and surprise PG&E or something like that. There's a court order for confidentiality applied by the court restricting the disclosure of this information. And the reason for that report or that order is that some of this information is anti-competitive. Some of this information is proprietary about PG&E's electrical system and how their grid works and its vulnerabilities. And there's some homeland security overtones and issues in that nature that kind of would also, I think the council and others would agree, would not be something that we would necessarily want to disclose to the general public, not because we don't want the general public to know it, but because we don't want bad guys to know it. And so, but with that in mind, we've come in here today after doing a detailed review of what we can disclose and what isn't covered or wouldn't be problematic under the confidentiality order. And we can share with you that this event happened because Valero had two systems, two electrical lines. We had one dedicated line that can fully operate and exceed the needs of the refinery, and we paid for and acquired and had put in PG&E a second backup line that's completely redundant to the first line. In this instance, in May 5th, there was a flaw in PG&E's equipment that was causing it to give a false signal that one of the lines was shut off, but it was not. It actually had power going through it. A secondary crew of PG&E unaware of the first problem with the line came in to do maintenance on the second line, and when they tripped it offline to do the maintenance, there's a system that's called the Special Protection Scheme, which is on to protect the PG&E grid, that if it receives two signals that both lines are shut off, it closes everything off to keep some kind of back power wielding off. That knocked everything offline on our case. So to address this issue, what we've done now is we've had some very good rapport with PG&E. We've been in, we've been through their maintenance programs and their overhaul, and we've set a number of things in place. These are the ones that we can share with you now. We've been able to come to an agreement with PG&E that any time they're going to be messing with either one of our lines, that Valero can disable on its side this, you know, the Special Protection Scheme, which is basically, that causes automatic shutdown of everything if there's any kind of signal or measure. That will prevent, would have prevented the incident from happening on May 5th. In addition to that, though, we've gone through and looked at the single-ended things. We want to limit the number of times PG&E is sticking a screwdriver into the wires that supply our refinery. So we've asked them, and we're working out an agreement with them, to bundle their maintenance so that they do all the maintenance on one line at one time, so the number of touches on the line and the risk for tripping any one of the two lines is reduced. We've gone through and successfully accomplished that for the '18 period, and we've compressed all of their activity into a two-week period of time. The other thing is that we now have agreement with them on pre-work inspection, so we get to look through their system to see before they come in and start messing with it and make sure there's not some issues going on. We've also gone through a pre-refinery equipment impact review where we can go through and try to move things off of electricity onto steam in order to mitigate the risk of anything happening on that. All of those are only accomplished if we get the notice from PG&E that their maintenance activity is going on, and we have that commitment from them now. So we feel very confident that the systems that we have in place today would have prevented the May 5th event had it happened. Again, the last thing I'd like to mention too is that, you know, we are working on communications with the city. We've met with the city staff, we're already moving ahead. And one last point on monitors, we've already reached out to the district to talk to them about the possibility of what it would take to get a community monitor, an additional one into Benicia, whether or not the district can manage it. These monitors are really complex. They're, this is a huge undertaking for the city to try to take on the idea of running a monitor. And Valero's partnered with the city on a lot of things. We've put lots of money and volunteer time and efforts into this community. We work very hard to have communication. We value our reputation here, and we are a good operator. Nobody has more of an incentive to make sure this doesn't happen again than us. This was a tremendous loss for us. So we're here today to tell you, we heard you, we heard you loud and clear, we're taking the actions to improve the communications, we're going to be giving you a 72-hour report on any major event we have. We've already agreed to do that to the city, we put that in writing to you guys as well. We've sent you the details on what we're doing to mitigate this issue. And we are recognized by all industry standards as the best refinery operator. So I'll take any questions if there's still time.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, that was very informative. Are there any questions? Councilmember Swartzman?
Yeah, if you can help clarify for me. So in, I want to go back to the air monitors and the, what you have up there is a bit of a glare. So the blue arrows, all those lines that are up here, so that represents, if I understood you, over 100 refinery monitors that are required by the air district and EPA. And correct me, are those up on stacks?
Yeah, these would be, well, they're different kinds, so we have parametric monitors, we have continuous emission monitors, and so there's different types of monitors. But yeah, most of these are, would be like stack probes that are sticking up the stack, measuring the actual emissions coming out of the refinery.
So there's probes inside the stack?
Inside the stack, right at the tip.
Okay, and I don't recall those real-time? They go to the district? What happens with the info?
Yeah, those are continuous emission monitors. The data is all recorded, and then we give regular reports to the district on this.
And how often are the reports?
Don?
Monthly.
Huh?
Monthly.
Monthly.
Okay, monthly reports, okay. The yellow dots, those, you say there's new BTECs, and that's to design to detect benzene? Is that what I understand?
Yeah, BTECs, benzene, tylenine, xylene, it's the benzene.
Okay, so those are all the yellow ones over, and there's a lot of them, it looks like.
Yeah.
And those are ground level?
Those are on the fence.
Or fence line?
They're up on the fence, set by EPA, there's a high standard on them, and they're passive, so they absorb the material out of the air, and then they're taken to a lab, and the benzene is extracted and measured.
And how often does that process take place?
Every two weeks.
Every two weeks. And the results of that process, where does that info go?
This is a new program, so all of that, all of those results go to the EPA, and then the EPA is going to be putting those on to a publicly-available webpage. And we can get you or the staff the information for that, and we can put it out in a
Okay, and the orange dots are the new ones that were approved by BackMed. And those are stretching from the western side pretty much all the way down, it looks like through that, well, through the buffer area all along there?
Yes.
And further up, and then also on the right-hand side?
Right.
Okay. And those are new monitors? I'm relating this back to what you were talking about, old monitors, new monitors. I'm assuming they're more sophisticated and more accurate than the older ones.
Yes.
Help me understand the pink dots.
The pink dots.
Actually, let's back up a, okay, the orange dots?
Yes.
Those are the new ones required?
No, these are existing, these are existing ground-level monitors that we've maintained for a number of years. They're just not, the data's collected and, but it's not, it's not been publicly available. I mean, we don't, we don't make it available in real-time. But these are monitors that Valero has maintained, I think, where does it go?
Which ones are those, the orange or the pink?
Where does it go? Okay. And so, so we'll have those, we have those out there now. So what we're going to do is we're adding telemetry devices on them, so they'll automatically upload.
So there's three of those currently that are community?
Yes.
Okay, you're getting the information, but the results aren't coming out for the public?
Well, they will be.
You're going to, and do you have roughly a timeframe when that might happen?
Within the next four or five months or whatever. Four or five months, by the six-month time period that we had.
Okay, got it, okay. Okay, so those are ground-level, the pink dots are the new ones?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so those are the new ones, the black, I understand, and the green dot is potential for, okay, got it. Thank you, that's all for now.
Vice Mayor Young?
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Wilson for bringing his staff here, making his presentation. It's the first presentation we've had in 14 months since the flaring, and I think that's indicative of a lack of communication. I think there've been a lot of questions about what happened then and things that, potential issues that have not been addressed. And so I guess my first question is, since this is not agendized, and we can't really get into it in any detail, would you be willing to come back at a future meeting to talk in more detail about what happened on May 5th, as well as the steps that you've described earlier and other related topics?
Yes, I mean, I think for the purposes of this meeting, we've kind of provided the things that we could talk about now readily without confidentiality. One thing we are looking at is whether or not we can come up with a confidentiality commitment. We are allowed to use consultants and other parties as long as they commit to protect the confidentiality of the, under the court's order. So we will, we can look at that, we can explore with the council for you guys on whether we can develop something like that. But, but right now, we have a court order that prevents a number of these things from being disclosed, and so the full aspect of this will, you know, come out upon resolution of the litigation. We also would tell you that, we can tell you what we're doing on our side, which we have, you know, there's another party here that also has, you know, some information, and they may be able to tell you stuff on their side as well.
So I just want to recognize that Ms. Bardet might have a clarifying question or just a question, but I want to finish with Vice Mayor Young. Can you wait?
Sure.
Okay.
So on the monitors, are you saying that on the map you gave me, and the color map is a little hard to tell orange from yellow from pink?
Yeah, I apologize.
But all of these are currently operational except for the orange dots or pink dots?
Well, the black dot is mothballed, it's, we still have the monitor, it's the one that the city was going to use as a community monitor, but it's now, you know, obsolete. The pink dots there are coming in, and we'll have those in by the deadline that the council's given us to get those in. We think that we can make that deadline, and we're working very hard on it because our initial monitoring program, the monitoring requirements that we had from, that we've already gotten approved from the district allows us to move forward with ours. We don't have to wait on that part of it.
And there are no monitors along the north side that, the closest to Southampton and Waters End?
Right, the northwest.
Above that, where the green dot is and further out?
Right.
And you said there aren't because you don't have utilities there to power them?
Well, they weren't there initially because the district requirements would tell you that that is not a necessary location to have a monitor, because it's less than 1 or 2 percent of the time that the air flows in that direction. And, but, but based on the conversations we've had from the city, we've heard that, you know, there's a concern that there's not some indication of what's going on up there. So we are in the process, as we represented in the last meeting, of looking at, can we get the monitor in there? And so I was just sharing that right now, there's no utilities, and we didn't study this for the open path monitoring, so you have to look at the terrain and the path and all that stuff to see if you can do it. So we're in the process of doing that. And we're trying to figure out what kind of monitor we can put in there.
Okay, thank you.
So, Ms. Bardet, it would, generally speaking, in fact, it's always, it's only a point of order that is permitted, and if you want to have questions to ask, then you will be called on in order of the card, or, so is it a point of order?
It's a point of order, at least I understand it to be a point of order. On this sheet, the black, the indication of the black dot, placement of GNSC city monitor operational between 2013 and 2015, that's incorrect. It was operational between, I believe, 2008 to 2009, and it's an array of monitors in a trailer, so there are, I'm going to say 10 monitors, inside a trailer that were tennis dry, and it was experiment run between the air district and Valero.
Okay, that's, that's way beyond a point of order. That is, you will, Marilyn, you will have an opportunity to address the council, they're not going anyplace, they're going to stay here. I understand, but that's not how it's done. You have to wait your turn, and then you can bring up the questions and inaccuracies. So, and you're not going anyplace, right?
No.
You'll stay here?
But I can't answer, I think, I think, I think we're conflating two things. There was a mobile monitoring effort that was done back
Right.
in seven and eight, that's what I think you're talking about. This was originally going to be a stationary source monitor that was going to be placed somewhere in the community, and then later, we changed it to a mobile monitor because they were, they were thinking about being able to move it around, and they hadn't decided, and while it was, while, after it was purchased and under construction, we went ahead and put it up there and ran it. I would also share that we had no hits of concern up there while it was there. And then after that time period, it was, I think, the hope that we would move it somewhere out in the community, but we never settled on a place or a person to do that or to manage it.
Okay, you'll probably be challenged on some of those statements, but I thank you very much for providing those statements. And as I said, we will try to get through all the testimony and the other questions, and if you can stay and answer those, that would be much appreciated.
Absolutely. Appreciate your time.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Hughes?
Thanks. Oh, you might want to stay up there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Again, I thank you for being here today, this offers a lot of information. I just want to make sure, clarification, on our sheet, it shows a red dot, placement of the Good Neighbor Steering Committee.
It is.
But it is the black dot, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's actually red, but
It's red there.
It looks black when it was photocopied.
Oh, got it, okay.
So when they added the matrix here, I think it, it's the one blackish reddish one right up there.
Okay. All right, well, I know one of the things that you talked about was improving the communication with the city, and it has been subpar for quite some time. And I know you've already, I know Don and his team have already met a number of times with city staff. What I'm looking for is a commitment, maybe I'll be putting you on the spot here, it kind of goes back to what the vice mayor was saying. The monitors that you show on this sheet here, and that you show on the picture, they're all required by regulation, at least that's what it indicates here. They're required by either Bay Area Air Quality Management District, EPA. Here's what I'm looking for, and then the pink obviously are required, obviously by the air district. I'm looking at where that green dot is as well. And I hear you on the 1 percent, whether it's 1 percent or 7 percent. It might not mean a lot if I live downtown, but if I live up in that area, that 1 percent, I think one of the other speakers mentioned it, that's important to me. I'm looking for a commitment from Valero that would indicate that you're willing to sit down with the city, and if through those discussions, there are gaps that we as a city feel are important to fill, that you would make the commitment to consider filling those.
Well, I mean, I think that's exactly what we're doing with this green dot. I mean, we're looking at what kind of monitor we can we put in there, and whether it's an array monitor.
Can I interrupt just for a second?
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, it might be more than a green dot. It might be a couple of green dots.
Right, right. And we're willing to talk through that. I think one of the challenges is maintaining these monitors, we would want the Bay Area Quality District to maintain them because they're very sophisticated time into their network. So what we're talking with the Bay Area Quality District right now is to get a sense of an understanding of what it would take for us to put a monitor in. I mean, you know, numbers were thrown out earlier by the, I guess it was the advocate for the motion about, you know, 17 monitors. I mean, these monitors are very expensive, and, and so, you know, we want to make sure that we're protecting the community, we're covering the community adequately, and we want to, and we want to work with the city to show that. 17 monitors would cost an enormous amount of money. And, you know, in terms of this ISO too, just to bring it up, Contra Costa County is the whole county. They've got, you know, four or five facilities over there that are participating in. And by the way, their district air quality reviews showed that there were lots of pollutants over there, and as opposed to the quality here. So we've invested a lot of money, hundreds of millions of dollars, to lower the emissions in these facilities, and we're trying very hard to meet the expectations of the city and to lay these things out. out. So, we absolutely have a dialogue with the city and, and sit down with them and try to go through this. In terms of how many monitors it will take, you know, that'll be something we'll have to, we'll have to work out. But we've never been shy about coming in here and volunteering a lot of stuff. We've, we've spent, you know, I think over $12 million on Good Neighbor efforts on that. That's in addition to all the other efforts that we put in. So, we're, we're not recalcitrant. We, we absolutely agree with what you said about communication. That's why I'm here from a corporation to make sure that we live up to our expectations and standards as well as yours. And so, we're, we're willing to work with you. We, we have renewed a commitment to work with the city staff, work with the fire chief. We're exploring all kinds of opportunities that we think would be really, really helpful to, to both of us. I mean, you mentioned the fire earlier out on the dock, the asphalt tire. I mean, we helped
So, I'm sorry, you were answering a question, so you've had your 15 minutes.
Okay.
And I think we have further questions.
That's good.
Uh, Councilmember Campbell?
Well, it's not exactly a question. It's more has to do with the presentation. You know, you aren't exactly bobbing and weaving. You know, I know there are limits on what you can say, but for me, I think a lot of your headaches would go away if you just said, "We're putting in these monitors, required to put them in here. We're going to put, you know, a few more, some number, two, three, whatever, in the, the city. We're going to set up a website so everyone can look at it." And then if you say things like, you know, "We have the cleanest air in the Bay Area", you know, you just go to the website. I just don't understand why you're making this so complicated because, you know, to me, it, it will cost you some money to do that, but, you know, I'm not asking for 17, you know, air monitors in the community. I'm just looking to fill, again, a few holes that you have in there, maybe one or two by the schools. And, you know, that's, I just don't get it. I don't get why you can't just say, "We're going to put in these air monitors. We're going to give you a website. Here's the website. We all go home."
Well, I mean
I mean, you're the
I am trying to say that with, with the caveat that I don't know how many monitors you want, and I don't know what your expectations are. So, I'm trying to make sure that, that I, that I address the fact that we want to make sure that, that we've closed off the concerns of the community. We want to reach an agreement with you. We're going to put the green monitor in. I mean, we just got to figure out how and what kind to put in there. We'd like to make it an array that matches these others so we can feed it into the, to the district information. That way, it's all publicly available and looks just like the other monitors that are out there. We just got to figure out how to do that. In terms of placing the monitors in the community, you know, using city land, finding the, a partnership with the Bay Area Quality District to do all of that. So, so we're committed to work on that and to do that and to find the spots to put those. We also want to make sure you guys understand what we have in terms of mobile monitoring capability, so you have an understanding of how we plan to protect on that and how we can share that with the city in there. So, yes, we're there, we're, we're on it. It, it's just hard to say, "Yeah, I'm going to do exactly what you want" when I'm not sure exactly what it is.
Well, because I pretty much do know what I want as far as it goes. I want those monitors in as quick as possible because then you have some data to work with and put one or two, obviously near schools, because that's, you know, an area where you, you want to cover those people. That may be enough. After the data comes in, you may want to put
Yep.
One or two more
That sounds abundantly reasonable, and I think we would be, you know, I, I don't, I don't have the authority to commit to it right here, but I'm telling you right now, I'm telling you right now, we will be back in six months, in November, and we will have our plans and we'll lay it out, and we're going to coordinate with the city in the, in the meantime to figure it out, and the air district to figure out what we can count on them for in the partnership.
You were doing good to that last sentence.
Oh.
And I'm pretty sure you
Well, I will tell you, I am a senior vice president.
I
I'm over the regulatory stuff.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a corporate officer, and I'm going to go back to the board to do this. This is just, this is millions of dollars. And so, we are, are in the process of, of trying to do that. So, I'm committed to advocate for this inside the company. I think Don is very much committed to doing that. We want to, we want to meet your expectations.
Okay, but it's not millions of dollars what we're asking for because this is regulatory required. You know, the air district said, "You put them in, you follow our plan. This is where we've cited them. You put them in there."
Oh, yeah.
We're just looking at maybe one or two. That may be all you ever need, you know, as far as that goes. It may, you know, give you the necessary information. If the fence line monitors have the same results as, say, one out by Henderson School, then you got a pretty good bet that, you know, you have ambient air that has, you know, the same level of hydrogen sulfide or sulfur dioxide, you know, community-wide. So
I feel very confident that we can work that out with the city
Okay, okay.
And we will get together with your staff to do so.
Because, you know, I mean, I, I don't often quote Ronald Reagan, to say the least, but he had this line, "Trust and verify." And, you know, that, that line has a lot of, you know, play even if I didn't like him as a person or president, but, you know, it will do a lot to get rid of your grief if, you know, you do have this data, you know, available. Because, you know, like every other human that I know of, if you try to, you know, sort of wall something off, we get suspicious instantly, you know? And so, that's, that's just the way humans work. And so, I'm not trying to run your job or anything. I'm just telling you, you know, it seems like a simple enough fix to me, but
Right.
I, that's all I can say.
I think so too, so.
So, Mr. Welsh, to the question that is on the agenda tonight, and that is the rehearing for, or consideration of a rehearing for review of the draft industrial safety ordinance. Can you respond? Are you for, against, ambivalent?
Well, I, I think we're, we're against it. I think the, the city council laid out a path for us to come in and prove to you guys and to get these monitors in. There's some hardcore expectations set by the council that we intend to meet. And, and we do feel like the, the ISO that you guys are proposing is, is really redundant to what's already out there. This is very complex. And inspecting refineries and understanding all of this for the city to really employ an ISO and build up the expertise to duplicate what's already out there and available. What we'd rather look for is this communication partnership incorporating the city into the unified command or, or making sure that we meet your expectations for your separate command and get this information funneled into you in real-time basis. You know, the May 5th event was, you know, you know, a bad event from, from everybody's